... open session after a convenient closed session to obtain legal advice on a legal matter and to consult with staff, consultants, and other individuals about pending or potential litigation as authorized by state government article section 3-305 subsections B, 7, and 8. Time is now 5:59, and I call this legislative session to order. Good evening, and welcome to the April 14, 2025 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors you came in, make a right, and proceed to the stairwell. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator, and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. We do wish Hannah a happy birthday. She's out celebrating with her family, so she is not with us today.
That's sweet.
And at this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose law we live, in whose justice we serve.
Thank you. We will have the presentation and adoption of the agenda. I will ask our city clerk, Julie English, to review the agenda.
On today's agenda, we have three sets of meeting minutes. Yay. We have four appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions. There will be an award of bid. We are scheduled to have two public hearings, two resolutions, and then one second reading for an ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. English. I would adjourn motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any proposed changes or amendments to the agenda?
Motion to amend.
Okay. What is your amendment, Councilwoman Gregory?
To remove the public hearings.
Okay. All right. We have an amendment to remove public hearing resolution number 3382 and resolution number All those in favor of adopting the agenda and the amendments, please signify by saying aye.
Did we get a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion of floor is to approve, is to amend the agenda as presented by Councilwoman Gregory, removing resolutions number 3382 and 3383.
You need a second? Second.
If I just, the motion of the floor was for the agenda. We just, I asked for any proposed amendments or changes. There was no motion for that. It was a part of the original motion.
So we didn't get a motion for the amendment?
That will, because then we'll have to end the original motion as well, too, but it's okay. All right, we hear a second. All those in favor of the amendment to the agenda with the changes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, chair votes aye, and the agenda is adopted and amended. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Ms. English.
To the invocation.
Sure thing. Actually, I want to acknowledge our intern, Ms. Skylar Wilson. She came in just after I started, so thank you, Skylar. She's been working hard with our city council here. And we invite Mr. Richard Pope from Canvas Church. I don't know how I missed you, Mr. Pope, but thank you here for our city invocation.
It's an honor to be here. The seal of the city of Glasgow in Scotland has the phrase, "Let Glasgow flourish in the bottom," but it was shortened from "Lord, let Glasgow flourish" by the preaching of thy word, which served as both a motto for the city and a prayer for its people. Would you bow your heads? King Jesus, as we approach your throne through prayer, remind us of your word written by John in his gospel. He said that in the beginning was the word, and that the word was with you and was you. He said that all things were made through you and nothing was made without you. He said that life was in you and that that life was the light for us, your creation. He said that your light shines in the darkness and will not be overcome. If all things were made through you, Lord, and nothing was made without you, help us to understand your lordship, your sovereignty, and your authority. You are the king of kings. May we turn to you as a city and as a people trusting that the Most High, who holds the whole world in his hand, can surely hold our hearts and our cities secure. If you are the light and life of creation, then without you we have no hope. I pray that the same arms that were stretched out and pierced by nails on a T-shaped tree on Calvary would reach down to us now. Help us to turn away from vanity and temporary thrones to fully embrace yours. You are the way, the truth, and the life. You are the way for the hurting, the afraid, the marginalized, the leper, the addicted, the homeless, the rich, the Republican, the Democrat, the progressive, and the conservative. You are the way for every person made in your image that calls this city home. You are the way for our city. Help us to turn away from division, repent of our sins, and look to your righteousness. Lord, just as the prophet Ezekiel saw in the valley of dry bones, I pray you would bring life-giving revival to the city of Salisbury, that every lost and hurting soul would know they are loved and have a measurable value in your grace, that everyone made in your image matters, and in this love and in this grace there is hope. Jesus, I pray that this city, Salisbury, would flourish by your word. I pray that in King Jesus's name. Amen.
Pope, thank you for that invitation, and also thank you for your leadership in Canvas' Church, for their impact on Salisbury. We appreciate that. All right, and thank you, Ms. English. All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Wait, I'll go to the...
In a second. Thank you so much. Ms. English?
Keeping track.
So on the consent agenda this evening, we have three sets of minutes. The September 23, 2024 legislative session minutes, the October 7, 2024 work session minutes, and the October 14, 2024 legislative session minutes. We also have resolution number 3385, and I'm going to apologize now if I mispronounce anyone's name. We have appointing Abenesh Savanon to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for term ending April 2028. Resolution number 3386, appointing Sarah Lee Monroe to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for term ending April 2028. Resolution number 3387, reappointing Edwin Lindercamp to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, term ending April 2028. And lastly, resolution number 3388, reappointing Mandel Copeland to the Public Art Committee for term ending April 2028.
Thank you, Ms. English. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Do we have Abenesh, Sarah Lee, Edwin, and/or Mandel in the audience today? No? Well, we still appreciate you all, and we thank you for your work and future work to your respective committees. Thank you. At this time, we'll pivot to our award of bid. We'll invite Ms. Miller to the podium. I will entertain a motion to award the bid ITBA-25-111 Salisbury Fire Department EMS Medical Supplies as recommended.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah, very good. Thank you, counsel. The Department of Procurement does seek award of bid approval from the Salisbury City Council for the solicitation we'll talk about this evening. The city followed required bidding practices as defined by the Salisbury Charter and the Municipal Code of Ordinances, and publicly posted any solicitation for a city's competitively bid procurement on the city of Salisbury's procurement portal, Planet Bids, on the state of Maryland's website, eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. The bid tonight is a cooperative procurement, a piggyback, so we'll go into that. So this is for ITBA-25-111 for the Salisbury Fire Department EMS Medical Supplies. These vendors will provide and deliver medical, health and safety, surgical, and first aid-related equipment, supplies, accessories, and services on an as-needed basis. The cooperative contract number here is RFP 22-42 from Charles County Government. The contractors that were awarded contracts were Bound Tree Medical and Henry Schein. The contract effective dates start at July 1, 2022, and continue through June 30, 2029, which would include all renewals of the Charles County Government contract. The estimated annual expenditure for EMS medical supplies is approximately $52,000, as noted in your packet, the GL account in your packet, as well as what is used to purchase medical supplies. Purchasing authority per the city of Salisbury Charter SC 16-3, item 9, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, states that competitive bidding is not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance, and that's for contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Are there any questions or discussion from the council? All right, the motion on the floor is to award the bid ITBA-25-111 Salisbury Fire Department EMS Medical Supplies. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. The bid for ITBA-25-111 is awarded. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
All right, we will pivot to our resolutions. I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3389, appointing John Rankin to the election board for term ending March 2031.
So moved. Is this, is that what you're waiting for? So moved.
Motion? Is there a second? Motion of the floor, is there a second? If there's a second on the motion, then the motion will die?
Point of word, I just, I thought it'd be useful, you know, since John was, you know, volunteered with the election board and...
Mr. Mayor, and I know I've gotten criticism for this, but...
As you should. Go ahead.
I was just, I was just making sure that during protocol, I know we didn't have a motion, can discussion happen on this particular topic since the motion? I do want to hear from you, I just want to make sure, and the city administrator is shaking his head, no. I want to hear from the mayor, I just want to make sure that, again, protocol and just, we didn't have the motion and it didn't, it didn't actually happen, we can't discuss on the topic. Okay.
That's your ruling? That's your ruling? I mean, I can't make a general comment?
Mr. Mayor, give me one second. Okay, just want to make sure there's no second on the motion. No, okay, then that motion does die, and then, Mr. Mayor, so I'm just want to clear that the motion dies and...
Yeah. I mean, you know, the council's certainly within their purview to, you know, you know, the mayor's made a suggestion, I mean, in the nomination of John Rankin. He's the only person that actually participated in the redoing of the guidelines. He was endorsed by both of the existing board members, and I, you know, I just find it unnerving that we just can't make a simple nomination to somebody who's obviously qualified to do such a role and who's shown an ability and a willingness to do so. And I was hoping that, you know, if you're not going to, if you are going to nominate him, at least you could tell me why. It just seems a little arbitrary and capricious that they would just not make a second for somebody that's a, you know, obviously a solid citizen that obviously shows an area of interest in this area. So that's all I was going to ask for, but that was being too much to ask, I apologize, but...
I wanted to give you that time. I want to make sure you have all the time if you want to say something. I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
We were, yes. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your comments, and of course, it's always welcomed. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3390 to authorize city administrator and the director of procurement to act on behalf of the city in executing a contract for the supply of electricity.
So moved. Second.
Ms. English?
So next, we have a resolution. It's number 3390, and this resolution is to authorize the city administrator and the director of procurement to act on behalf of the city in executing a contract for the supply of electricity.
Thank you, Ms. English. Are there any questions or discussion from the council? And from...
None.
I actually have a question. Mr., I'm sorry, trying to find the actual resolution. Can you just underscore for the city? I know we had a question about this in email and just about the electricity. Can you just briefly summarize what this will do, you know?
I may get an assist.
Yes.
You mind jumping up here?
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll explain it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have to find my dates here. Okay, so back in October, we post, so, actually, let me back up one more step. The city's current electricity supply contract ends May, with the May-June meter read dates. So we're looking for a new contract. We have to, we'd like to be in a new contract. We posted a solicitation in October, got responses in November, knowing that as the time approached, we would be looking for best and final offers from those contractors that, the electricity supply firms that we were able to negotiate an acceptable agreement with. So we've been through that process. We've narrowed that process down to two select vendors that have the most favorable contract terms for the city. Today, we asked for a best and final price offer, which we expect to receive next Tuesday, and then based on the most suitable pricing options, we'll have our electricity, I'm sorry, our energy consultant come in and look at the pricing. There's different pricing models depending on the number of years and the different service accounts. He will make a recommendation to myself and the city administrator on which is possibly the best course of action for the city. When we get those prices in, the contract has to be executed that day. So there's no time in the process to then bring it back to council two weeks later, four weeks later, to do another award of bid like we typically do with contracts.
I'm sorry, could you just, I heard you just want to, can you just go back to the last two sentences? So when you get the proposal, you have to, you have to sign it that day?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Because of the, it's rates, it's rate-based?
Oh, okay, okay, that makes sense. Okay. Well, it doesn't, I understand the logic behind it, yes. Okay, because I was, and you, you know, kind of got ahead of my next question, because I know we had a question about, you know, why does the authority lie, you know, with you all, and, you know, why doesn't counsel, you know, why doesn't it come back to counsel? And even though, and I know that legislation says order design needs, but you answered it there because of the rates changing and adjusting, that, you know, you all could not come back to counsel for that to be approved. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
You're welcome.
And, you know, by way of Mr. Kitchrow, thank you for explaining. Counsel, any other questions or discussion? All right, the motion on the floor is to approve resolution number 3390. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. Resolution number 3390 is approved. Thank you. All right, we'll pivot to the ordinance, single ordinance for tonight. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2928 for second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2928, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment to appropriate funds for the 2024 and 2025 Maryland Folk Festivals. As you mentioned, this is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. Are there any questions or discussion from the council? Motion on the floor is to approve ordinance number 2928. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye. The motion passes, and ordinance number 2928 is approved and adopted. Thank you. That is all the business for tonight. We will pivot to the public comments portion of the agenda. Those who wish to speak tonight can just walk to the podium. You can just state your name if you are a city resident, and you will have three minutes to speak. We welcome you to the podium at this time.
I'm Matt Drew. I live at 301 North Clermont Drive in Salisbury. I return tonight to speak about a subject that I spoke about at the last council meeting. On the 24th of March, I came to the council to address that I see a critical issue that affects the Salisbury zoning process, and specifically, it's the inability for the city to approve variances for increased residential density. Currently, the Salisbury code, I think as you know, does not align with the Maryland charter, and there's been a court case ruling against the city about that. So effectively, we have no process until there's a legislative change. To be direct, like, this is the body that makes that legislative change. And so what I had proposed at the meeting in March was what I saw as a fairly simple three-step process, where we develop a draft, we review it in a work session, and then we have public comment. Eventually, that legislation gets approved, and then we implement it. And so I'm here today to hear an update. I did receive one email from council, which I appreciate, but, you know, up until now, I haven't gotten any feedback about my proposal. You know, we always talk about the things that are urgent and take your time, sometimes get away, eat into the things that are important, and to me, this is both urgent and important. So it's a high priority, and I'd love to see some action on it. And if you have questions about what I provided last time, I'd be happy to talk about that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Still Lynn Bratton, and I still live on South Boulevard in Salisbury, Maryland. I don't think I'll need the full three minutes, because I just have a couple of quick things. Thank you, Julie, for trying to catch up on the minutes. Appreciate that. Can we get them posted? Even when they're approved, they still seem to not kind of be lagging on the website. Number two, I do have a suggestion that might help us all. Those minutes are so old, you even remember what was said in those meetings. I know you've got the tape on them, but perhaps in order to keep catching up, we could also just do, like, the current minutes also. Like, do the current minutes and then do two or three from the back, and so we don't get farther behind, and people can really remember what happened like yesterday. I think that might be a suggestion that might help fill the gap and bridge the gap and get the whole kind of back up to normal. If you don't understand what I'm saying, just please ask me. The other quest, a couple of things I have, too. The hometown heroes was something that was actually in one of the sets of minutes that we just approved. I'd kind of forgotten about it, and then I read the minutes, I'm like, okay. So I'm just asking for an update on that. Haven't seen any banners going up on any of the lamp posts. I know April was very, very anxious to see that occur. I know that we're even doing a WW2 documentary presentation at Community Players in the next month. So I think it would be wonderful if we could get something moving on that, or at least get an update on where we stand on it. I also saw that there's some new legislation or some new grants that are coming out for cleaning up some property and so forth in our city. Huge amount of money. I think that should be mentioned at some point. Maybe it'll come up with our statements from our folks up here later on. And honestly, I'm very distressed about the process of appointing people to our commissions. If somebody's willing to serve, they've got the credentials, and they put force of voice, I think the least that would happen is that you, as a body, would call them in and talk with them to ally any of the questions that you may have had about their applications. I think it was very off-putting, the way this was handled tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are we on work session?
It's a legislative session to public comments on any item at this time.
So the legislature, there won't be any discomments?
This is the legislative session.
Oh, it is? I'm sorry. Anyone else want to go?
I received, or these were in the, the agenda notes, and in my opinion, this means absolutely nothing. This needs to be broken down by category and reflected as a tax increase or a tax decrease per line item. You can't possibly manage anything off of this spreadsheet. As far as, just in general, I'm not going to get into whether it's state, local, whatever. We do not need more people crammed into less space. Easy. And, DeShawn, still lying, still serving your own belligerent ego rather than the citizen voter and taxpayer standing in front of you. You have the nerve to deliver your concerned palette of feigned and phony fairness to the 33,000 residents and 17,000 voters when the list before you banished the 10, that's right, 10, original inhabitants that were torn from the list and replaced with liberal-leaning icons, creating the new foundation for your own personal agenda. Your empathy was touching because you continued with the heartfelt concern that the list would cause too much work for the city clerk at all. I walk by the council president's office, and I hear the quarried stones of government being handbroken with the beating of computer keys by these poor, innocent, overworked surfhands, bleeding with the massive obligation of the list. I guess you'll spend more tax money on a podium, microphone, and backdrop of the office of the president hosted by Karim Jean-Pierre, another great Miss Directress, and I think she needs a job. The audience vast and attentive questions, shooting past with interested excitement, asking, is he going to be the first to sit on the big-boy seat of the taxpayer-funded $1.4 million fire trip? Please tell us when you judge your next high school cooking contest, the next bicycle interstate funded by our pocketbooks, savings account, and huge Westmore tax increases. When will he appear with the Salisbury Zoo with the council vice president and tickle and tussle with new and ever-so-cute monkeys? Do you want to be in show business or responsive government?
Thank you.
Wait a minute. Riley Smith, Salisbury.
Any other public comments? All right, seeing or hearing none, we'll pivot to administration comments for tonight.
Just a couple, just a few. If you were around this weekend, we were in full event mode. We had two fabulous events. Hops on the River had just over 200 people attend that event. It was a bit chilly, but it was well-executed, so, you know, shout out to our ABC team and our support staff, our fire, police, and our field ops team. And then the next day, on Sunday, we had the Jeep, the Easter Jeep hop at the zoo. About 1,200 people attended that event, so awesome event. A lot of great things are happening at the zoo. We've got Third Friday coming up this weekend. Even though we are off on Friday, we'll still be having our Third Friday event, so we are full blast events. I see Caroline and team over there. It's going to be busy, so come out, enjoy some of our festivities and activities downtown. I also just want to give a shout out to the folks who helped with the Salisbury Marathon last weekend. Big event, big lift from the community and all those who participated and helped out. You know, another shout out, thank you to them. Mayor, I will shift to you.
Thank you, Mr. Kitchrow.
Yeah, and it, yeah, it was a big weekend. I threw out the ball at West Lloyd Little League, Go West, although I'm a Fruitland guy, Fruitland baseball guy. And then I also went to the NFL flag football at Y-Hi, which was a tremendous turnout. We had almost 200, 200 contestants. It's double what it was last year, so shout out to Chief Mindshine and Hity and the guys over there that are doing a great job, along with Coach Wood from the SU for participating there. And of course, I made it over to the Hops on the River to satisfy, you know, to reward myself for participating. So, yeah, it was a good day. And then I went to the, with Light Street, yeah, the mural, that was awesome. So that was complete. That was something they've been working on for a number of years, so, number of months, I should say, and it turned out great. So it was a good day.
All right, that concludes the administration comments. Any council comments for this afternoon, evening? Yes?
Had an airport commission meeting this afternoon, and the signage is going up. They're trying to work with the state to get more signage for the airport on Route 50, and that takes, it's a little more of a process. The new airline service flying to Orlando will be announced sh... The new airline service flying to Orlando will be announced shortly. They did a progress report over the last three years. The new maintenance building is near completion. Improvements to the terminal, if you're flying in or out of Salisbury. Automated parking is completed, and the security, which everyone is really concerned about everywhere, the security is improving at the airport and has a really nice timeline on that. I stopped Scott and Steve, don't even know their last names, to thank them for checking the streetlights, the LED lights that are not working and need to be replaced. So a shout out to them. Went to the after-hours event last week, and my person that I want to thank is sitting right here, Derek Jarman, who is the Economic Development Manager, and he has his thumb on everything that's happening. And make sure you pick up, Andy mentioned this, pick up this flyer, because he and his group know exactly what's going on downtown, and they have lots of nice things coming for us. I was privileged to attend the Vietnam Veterans Day event at the VFW on Main Street. It was, we had state representatives, we had the commander, we had a lot of representation there. I was not aware, I was very aware of the Vietnam War, but I was not aware of why the special date of March, the 29th, was picked to become Vietnam Veterans Day, as opposed to the regular Veterans Day that we're used to. That date is the anniversary of the last U.S. combat troops that left Vietnam in 1973. So that was very, very moving. It's very cathartic for these men to be able to join together and have a support group, as well as to share their stories. And Andy's already mentioned Earth Day this coming Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00. And the one thing that really is special about what the zoo's doing, they collaborate with SU, and they have a sensitivity session from 10:00 to 11:00 before it opens. And this is for children that may not necessarily participate in regular activities because they have a higher level of sensitivity to events that are going on in mass chaos, basically. So a very eventful time.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeShiel. Council members?
I just, I was going to also plug the Earth Day event, so thanks, guys, you got that covered. That's actually going, it's not this Saturday, it's
The 26th.
26, yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
It's the 26th, yep. So don't try show up there today, on this Saturday. Just another plug for Third Friday. I'm looking forward to it. It's been a while. I always enjoy it, and this one is also themed along the Earth Day, environmental consciousness type of thing, and I think this will be a really nice one. Let's hope this weather holds, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman President?
Just a couple of things. I know that a couple sessions ago, I did take a picture and gave Mr. Kettrow a list of things that the council really wanted some updates on. And I'm just still kind of waiting for him. I know we had the council, all of us, every council member had asked for over a year about the Carroll Street, and it was lovely to see the Carroll Street diagram posted on the Salisbury's Facebook. The Carroll Street redesign actually, Sharon, was shown to the Bike and Pedestrian Committee before it was even on the Facebook page. We never, the council never got a presentation of what was being posted on the Facebook page, which is fine, but we have been asking for it for a year and a half. Spring Chase, I'd just like an update about Spring Chase. We've talked about them all last fall, about their lights. I know that that community has still been asking and inquiring about that. There's been no updates about that. But I'd like an update about Ann Street. We did see the redesign of the Carroll Street via the Facebook. One of the things I think the council really would like to see is how that $12 million pocket of money for those grants for the bike lanes and rails and trails, how we're going to reconfigure it. We decided that some of the places for some of the bike lanes weren't really practical, I think, and there were some other like infrastructural problems, but there's still this money that's just lingering out there, and we've not heard about any of those pockets of money that make up that $12 million, and how that's going to be redistributed, or can we redistribute it, or do we have to send it back to the state? And I think that also would help the Bike and Pedestrian Committee have a direction too on recalibrating some of their mission or some of the direction that they may need to go in to kind of continue educating people about bike lanes, bike safety, pedestrian safety, this kind of thing. It's kind of like a little bit of a lag there. So I didn't know how soon we could get any of those.
I've got a couple of updates now, or can just send them out to you?
That would be perfect. I'd like to hear them.
Sure. So Safe Streets for All, that's the 11 to $12 million grant. I think I'm scheduled for the 15th of May to update council on the status of Safe Streets for All. So as long as it stays on the agenda, I will be presenting to you all in a couple of weeks with kind of our direction. Spring Chase, that is part of a bigger package that the mayor is presenting. You'll see when you get the budget, that will talk about some neighborhood revitalization and some funding that we're looking to earmark for neighborhoods in the upcoming budget show. You'll see more about that when you get that budget. We'll talk about it, maybe some more in detail next week, if you'd like to. Remind me of the Ann Street Village specifically details. We are, Christine, is we're moving forward with adding more bodies to that. We've added two more. We've had to remove a couple, we've added two, but our goal is every couple of weeks to add a couple more until we get to a full capacity of about 22 residents. So that is still moving forward. With her being there for almost two months now, we have a good, strong footing and a path forward, so we're feeling pretty comfortable in the trajectory of Ann Street, as long as we continue to vet people, have good behavior. We're going to
How many, how much, what's the occupancy right now?
About 15.
15?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were hovering around 12 for a while. I think we had gotten up to maybe 17. We lost a couple, and we, so, yep, but we're moving, we're creeping up, and I think our goal is to get to 22.
I think one of the advantages of having Christine there is the expertise to qualify someone that's there, that can go there and sustain themselves and be there, whereas before, we had a little bit of churn.
We had one more item. As a first one, I forgot to jot it down.
Just the Spring Chase and the Ann Street. The Carroll Street, we were never shown.
Yes, okay.
Thank you for having that out on Facebook. We got to see it firsthand. And then just really worrying about that $12 million that keeps coming up, and I know it's been a lingering thing, and I can understand that we've recalibrated, and we had to step back, but there's, you know, we're in like a, I guess, like Twilight Zone, kind of figuring out how to recalibrate exactly what direction that that whole entire committee should go and what's going on, and just some direction would be helpful. But I see that, I'm hearing now that you're going to present that on the 15th.
Yeah, I can make sure you guys have it well in advance of what the plan is, so you're not seeing it for the first time.
Great. Thank you.
Council Vice President, thank you, Mr. Kettrow, for updating us. A few things, and again, thank you, council, for attending the events you have, which I've attended alongside you all, but thank you for being ever so present and for updating us on what you're doing, along with some of the events that my fellow council members have laid out this evening. Symphony, I did go to the Symphony 21 presentation or show last week, and that was absolutely phenomenal, wonderful experience. I was so, so, it was a blessing to go to. It was relaxed, everything, it was just euphoric. It was relaxing, and Mr. Bowen, Daniel Bowen is an absolute, just, he's a talented individual, and we're so lucky to have that talent here in Salisbury that reaches not only across the nation, but internationally as well. So if you haven't gotten a chance, definitely look him up with Symphony 21 and all the good work that they're doing. I do want to mention that after our last council meeting, which was, I think, three weeks ago, we had a little pause because March had five weeks in there, but I got a report that Salisbury Police Department helped an individual who was, had a disabled vehicle, and they were so nice and pleasant. And I know a lot of times, we here field a lot of the concerns, and I just wanted to highlight that publicly. I appreciate the person who contacted me and told me how pleasant and nice they were. Again, I just, you know, it's always good to, of course, give that positive reinforcement from our officers and our frontline workers, associates there. Since Councilwoman Jackson is not here, and I know a citizen didn't mention that, she did at the last meeting, mentioned about the Hometown Heroes, and just where that was. Again, she wasn't fully a part of that presentation and the actual, the buildup with that, but you know, I think we do want to make sure that we help out with that. I know the county and we have sort of relationship there, so if administration can, at a future date, update us on where that's going to go, how it's going to play into it. And again, just on behalf of Councilwoman Jackson, I think, and Councilwoman DeShiel highlighted it, you know, she's an advocate for the veteran community. We attend her events as we can. Mr. Mayor, you do as well. I think it would be prudent for us to make sure she's a part of that process as much as possible. I know we said in the past, but just making sure of that. Fielded a concern for resident in District 2 from council, from Congressman Andy Harris' office, about some water that's seeping through on her lawn. I won't go into the details, but it's rather alarming. On the same day that we did get the concern, I called that lovely resident, and I went out there myself and just assured her that we would look into it. I know that we, the city, had went out there in the past, so I'll speak with the administration about that, but hopefully we can remedy that because it is alarming just what's going on there. But she was assured that we, the city, you know, we did address it and acknowledge that there's something going on there. I went by there, took some pictures, and just communicated with her and a couple of residents that there was an issue there. So again, we'll talk about that offline, but I told her that, she was so thankful that, you know, that I came out there, but I told her, one, that's our job, but we as a city, we're going to make sure we communicate, you know, what the remedy looks like for that, so.
Does she have a broken water line? Is that what you're saying?
It's, I don't think, yeah, it is, and beyond my scope. We'll bring back Director, yeah, Director Corey about that. But Safe Streets for All, thank you for highlighting that. The proposal for zoning and density, I know someone mentioned that, and we thank you for your email. Again, that's been, you know, the topic of discussion since, at least, I've been on council, and we worked through a couple of things, and I think that, you know, we as the council and administration do need to work towards what that looks like moving forward. So I will put that on the list for us to work out how it looks forward and, you know, where legal counsel can direct us and how we can come to agreement with that. I do agree, we got the CIP last week as council. I forward it to the council members. You'll see here in a few moments, if you can stay, we're going to talk about the CIP and the work session. We have some questions, and we do hope for a detailed exhibit there, but that was just the summary, but you'll see a detailed, I think, from administration, a detailed kind of light item there in the budget. But this was a summary that we've been requesting since, since January, February. We did get that last week in preparation for today's meeting, but I do actually echo your thoughts on the concerns there. We agree on something, Mr. Smith, so.
Well, not necessarily. I want to take a part of it.
Well, yes, so, on that tidbit there. And then just final thing, which kind of ties into it. We, with the council, and as myself, on behalf of, we're trying to communicate with the mayor's office on a few things, haven't quite been successful. I know there have been some concerns about density, and then there's things on different agendas, and again, I want to make sure and underscore here that we on council level, I like to remain respectful of our position with how the city runs and how government works. And you see that here tonight, and again, there's some things that I have suggestions on, but when there's a request from the mayor's office, I like to honor that, and that's what you saw here tonight and moving forward. So if there's requests for what items are on what agendas or planning zoning, et cetera, that is something that administration deals with. You know, we have our lane with legislation, and as legislators for the city, and I, we don't like to overstep those things, but we do try to communicate, and those things don't work out to the best avail, but we do try and communicate. And I've tried to work across the aisle, and I think it is best if we do, can cohesively have conversations, because it does pan out for the best. But you know, if there is a request, then we do honor it, and then we move forward from there. But I just had to make that clear and known that we have exhausted conversations and how to work forward, and this has been, we're coming up on two years now, and we're exhausted. So nonetheless, I appreciate all of you all, and again, all the events, and this is the time of year we have all the events and things going on, and of course, Third Friday, one of my favorite events. Seeing no other comments or questions, concerns, this legislative session is now adjourned at 6:43. I do call our work session at the same time to order, and we will, if there are any members who are planning to, yes. And actually, we do need to take a five-minute recess. I will entertain a motion for a five-minute recess from someone from the council.
Move.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Chair, vote aye.
Thanks, you all. I want to make sure we are.
We are, there we are, staying on as close to time as possible. Thank you all for being here. We'll start our work session with a presentation on Zen City with us members from our communications team, so if you all wouldn't mind just stating your name and your titles for, I think this is both of you's first time here, so, in a while, at least.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us today. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Jordan Ray. I'm here with Nadine Brittingham. We're both media specialists within the communications department.
Wonderful.
Yes, of course. You know, I'm excited to present to you a general overview of Zen City, along with the update on a few of the surveys that we have currently, along with the live demonstration on how to visit Zen City publicly, but also some of the capabilities that it has on the backend. So let's move on. So for those who don't know what Zen City is, it's a unique platform that allows us to engage with residents by truly understanding their needs and wants and priorities through surveys, along with understanding the sentiment, you know, understanding how residents feel towards particular projects and initiatives by using strategic analytics results through the platform. So we do this because we want to engage with our residents, truly understand what their needs, wants, and priorities are. That helps us make data-driven decisions as we move forward with projects and initiatives. So I'm excited to present to you some of the capabilities that this project has. So as we move forward, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but let's keep on going. So not only does this platform allow us to engage and report the results to our departments and officials, but also allows us to publish to our social media outlets through a management software that allows us to schedule posts, create AI-generated written responses, and also manage the social media platforms that we have. So all in all, we have a great opportunity to connect with our residents. So we're going to break down how we do that. So there's two things that we like to engage with, and one is Zen City Organic. Zen City Organic gathers results from our social media outlets that are public by understanding how residents are truly feeling. An example of that is, is we're interested in understanding the conversations that are had online about downtown events. We're able to go ahead and create a project that then allows us to use keywords to pick up on the conversations that are had across 140-plus social media outlets. So it's a great opportunity for us to see what's actively being shared across different pages, posts relating towards a particular project. So it's a good way for us to understand how people are truly feeling as we move forward. Pushing along, we also have Zen City Engage. Zen City Engage allows us to create customizable surveys. While building these surveys, they have it where we can either build it from scratch or have AI-generated surveys as we're working on, trying to gather feedback from our residents. Once built and is uploaded to our site, it has over 40-plus languages where residents can use tailored towards them, so they're able to go ahead and understand what's going on effectively. So within all of that, the most important thing is to gather as much information as needed, and we work alongside with our department heads, our city employees, to understand how we can generate the questions that are needed so we can get the answers that we need to move forward. So it's a great way for us to engage and truly understand what people need and want. And I'm going to get in later on, on a few examples of what that looks like. So when it comes to the surveys, we're doing this because, you know, one of the reasons is to understand customer, our residents' needs and wants for our budget and our fund allocation. So with that, we can create surveys that are tailored towards a particular project or broad overview, so we can get a better understanding as we're forming our budget and moving forward with projects and initiatives. So it's a great way to think on the big picture, on how we can hear what they're thinking of. And then, in addition to that, we can basically plan out quarters and years ahead through these surveys, gathering the results that we need to develop projects, again, with data-driven decisions. So it's a great way for us to truly understand the needs and wants of our employees. And then I wanted to get into some of the active projects that we have now. There are three surveys. They're available on our website, and that is one on the potential community center on the west side of Salisbury. center on the west side of Salisbury, along with the Maryland Folk Festival, and in addition to that, the Urban Trees Project. So at the end of this project, I'm going to give you a live demonstration on how to reach to those points so you can go ahead and participate in it yourself or spread the word. So I wanted to go down and give some general results that we received from these active projects, which is between the date range of March 4th all the way up to March 31st. So within that, knowing that it might be a little hard to either read on screen or on the paper, I'll be sure to send this to Julie so she can disperse that with you as well, along with the results, so you can have a better way to be able to view it. But with no further ado, let's get into a few of the key results. So between the dates, March 4th and March 31st, we had about 117 submissions that were completed for the Rust Side Community Center. And with that, we're seeing that there's about 90% of those submissions are, would like to see a community center on the west side of Salisbury. In addition to that, a key finding that we found interesting was of those submissions, it seems like they're leaning more towards of the ones to have an indoor gym and/or professional development opportunities for the youth. So as you can see, this is a general overview of what some of the results could look like through Zen City, but they're built and customizable availability throughout. So moving forward, here are some key findings from the Maryland Folk Festival. And again, through the date ranges, March 4th through the 31st. Um, and at the time period, we had roughly 48 submissions completed. Some got started, but didn't make it all the way to the end. However, within all of that, we're seeing that a lot of people would recommend it to other people. They, they enjoy the event, the atmosphere, and then they'd rate it some a 10, 1 out of 10. So it's incredible to see these results as we're building these initiatives, understanding how we can improve, how we can grow, but also most importantly, understand our residents. And last but not least, we have our Urban Trees Project, and uh, this is a great opportunity for us to understand where residents would like to have trees planted with this project. It's incredible to see, and at this time, we had 88 submissions. And then we're starting to notice that between parks and recreation spaces, along with streets and sidewalks, that's where residents would like to see these trees planted. So most importantly, with the results that we get, we have it fed back to the department that is relevant, along with giving us a good understanding as, as city officials, to understand how we should move forward with projects and initiatives. So it's an incredible way for us to truly engage with our residents, and I'm looking forward to giving you a live demonstration of a few of the capabilities.
One quick question while you're pulling it up, Mr. Ray. Um, I know we have the date range of March 4th through 31st. Was this the, for each of the three surveys, were they, uh, published, uh, publicized before the March 4th date or?
So that's when they were live. That's when they went live and they're promoting.
All of them went live on March 4th?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Any additional questions?
I just wanted to shout out, they, you had a flyer at the library.
Yes.
For the west, you know, for the west community center and the QR code. And I mean, that's reaching a lot of people. It's in the children's section. So, good job.
And just add that, um, he just pulled this for this presentation, stopping at the 31st, but these are still ongoing. Um, so it's our live data as we were sitting here, people can still be filling out surveys. So he's about to show you.
That's great.
What is, give it all like top marks when you fill it out.
There you go. Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. Yes. So, yes, again, these projects are being promoted on our social media, our website. And then again, we're considering other opportunities to continue to promote this as much as we can because it's important to hear back from our residents. So, let's see.
Jordan, you may have to unplug it and plug it back in. Sometimes it goes in the presentation mode on the PowerPoint.
Let's try. Awesome. Thanks, Chris. Yeah. So as we're, as a public user and you're interested in learning more about the surveys that we have live, it's very easy to access. You can either get to it two different ways. You can come down to this tab and select community engagement, or you can drop down the menu and select community engagement as well. So once selected, it takes you to our overall dashboard of a few of the projects that we have. Within each survey, it gives you a general description of what the survey is all about, the reason that we're seeking community input. And then from there, you're able to run through it and submit a survey. It's very simple and we try to make it quick and accessible so we can get as much feedback as possible. So if you were to participate, it's very simple. You get brought to the home screen and from there, fill in how you feel, think, and what you'd like to see. So that's an example from the public facing. Very different for each survey because with this platform, we have the ability to create customizable questions through scaling. Uh, it just does a number of things that it can do, and I'll show you a little bit about that later on. So.
Mr. Ray, were you, maybe I'm fusing a couple of things. Were you saying that you're able to, um, tailor the surveys to different languages?
Yes.
Okay. So how, um, especially for the community center, uh, one, how, how are we able, I'm, I'm on it now. Um, are we, what do we have to do to get that in, in different languages?
Yep. Very simple. So it's on the backend, but once you get on the platform.
Oh, you don't have to show me now, but so, so we are able to publish?
Yes. So there's this icon that users can select and select which language they'd like.
So like me, myself, I can select a different language?
Yep. And figure out what works best for you and then go from there. It's very, very impressive. And to continue, I wanted to get into a few of the capabilities it has on the backend of the website. So we mentioned the organic portion of this website, right, where we're gathering community sentiment. And the ways we're able to do that is by using keywords. So I mentioned downtown events earlier, and this is one that we built prior before, but we're able to gather how people are feeling regarding our events with a positive sentiment or negative. And as we're seeing, it's outweighing on a positive note. So that means we're doing what we should be. And just to kind of give you a breakdown of this, of these dashboards, moving down, you see some popular words that are associated with downtown events. When building this, I was able to use key phrases and key words that was able to generate posts related to downtown events. So with that, it gives you a breakdown of some of the sources of where we're receiving this information. So with the keywords, if I was to select community, it's going to bring down all the stories that was related with the keyword "community" and/or downtown events. And then put the number of other keywords as well. So it's very impressive to see different sources across the board. We monitor our official channels, along with unofficial channels, and it's over 120 that we're gathering feedback. And as you're thinking about those sources, those are social media and digital online, um, not news and media and radio, but not necessarily print. So everything online is where we're trying to capture information from. So that's an example of what the organic version of Zen City looks like. It just gives us a great opportunity to truly understand what people are feeling in the conversations that are being held. So moving forward, I talked a little bit about Zen City Engage, and those are the surveys that we have. With the surveys, I mentioned that they're customizable built, and that's what we're going to do real quick. So this is a general survey that was built on understanding the community's needs on public art. So with that, simply, we just have to build it, and this is something that was pre-generated from us, from the information that was imported. And then from there, let's see, bring it down to page two. If we wanted to add a question, we'd simply select add a question. And as you can see, there is a number of questions that can be formed based off of the capability that Zen City has. So you can see it's very tailored towards each project to make sure that we're getting the results that we're looking for. And from a preview view, from a user standpoint, this is what it would look like. And as you can see, so for, similar to what we showed you earlier in the surveys. So within all that, I'm glad I was able to give you a general overview of what it could look like and the capabilities that it has. And, uh, at this time, I would open it for any questions that you may have.
Thank you all for, uh, for making use of that and for already, um, you know, getting surveys and sharing the results. Counsel, any questions?
I have a couple of, a couple of questions. Um, with the surveys, with, with regard to the surveys, what's, what kind of protections do we have for spam, people spamming it or, or, you know, um, sort of, um, bombing the, the, the results? You know, you see it happen on Google reviews and that sort of thing all the time. What's, is there any protection to stop people from just repeatedly spamming, uh, replies to that?
Yes. Yes. So there's a few different ways it does this.
Okay.
Say if we're at an event and we're seeking to gather feedback, it can create digital fences with, it can outline a particular area or zone to make sure that that IP address isn't picked up a second time. So it'll restrict you from being able to submit two, five surveys moving forward.
Good. Okay. Um, and I think, you know, this is, this is a lot of really good information. Um, you know, are there going to be, you know, surveys that department heads could put out, not just about downtown, but like, or events, that sort of thing, but things for infrastructure and, and that sort of stuff? Are we gonna, are we gonna look at that?
Yeah. So there's a number of capabilities that this platform has, but most importantly, it's understanding what the departments are looking for. So with then, they can request to have a particular survey on a project. But from there, the communications department and administration will work on seeing that big picture on how we're able to go ahead and effectively communicate a survey, partnering with the departments.
Awesome. I like that idea.
Yeah.
I was just going to comment that I, I really like it. I think, I like it. Last year when we were talking about doing it, um, kind of a Facebook page for municipalities. I think it really can add, you know, as we get better at it, and better questions, a little more narrowing, we can even extract more information, I think would be better. And, you know, just get better and better at it, get a sense of what the community's looking for. So it's a good tool.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'll add to that, Mayor. Um, it's incredible to see that this is when we initiated some of the surveys, you know, being that they started on March 1st, 1st, 4th, excuse me. So it's incredible for us to see where we can improve, continue to grow with this project because as Zen City grows, we continue to grow as well. So we're looking forward to the improvement as we move forward.
Oh, I've got another question, actually. Um, it just popped in my head that, are we going to be able, is this something that we could use to gather contact information for people, for things like our, you know, the neighborhood newsletters that go out that, that, um, you know, the neighborhood services team puts out, you know, that sort of thing? Is that sort of data going to be available for them to use to be able to put more people into the loop and communicating what's going on at the city?
Not necessarily, but I will have an opportunity for users if they're interested in that as well. But what I will say, when it comes to the surveys and the data that we're receiving, we try to do it anonymously. So the data is secured and, and, uh, basically residents know that their, their information and data is secured. So ultimately, we'll do demographic results with that, but not necessarily being able to target a particular person. But now if residents were, or are looking forward to receive updates, there are text alert capabilities by visiting our website. It's easy to search and they can get in a loop of, uh, city events and things of that nature.
I've definitely put something in there about it.
Yeah.
To, to send people that way, at least.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate you, you all for, uh, for shouting this. I've seen it posted, um, on our social media pages as far as the surveys. I think those are good and we've gotten some, some good feedback here so far. And like Councilwoman DeShiel says, she's seen the QR code, so thank you all for, for you doing there. I think this would be good. What is, you know, um, with, with council and how we want to make sure we, we stay present i- in our own districts and of course, uh, citywide, what, I know you all were seeing the process for, um, you know, department heads and, uh, for, for tailoring the questions and putting it on, on there. We don't want to have so, you know, too many, um, surveys out, but, uh, what's the process like for if a council member wants to, um, create a, you know, a survey or, or, or get some results on how to best meet the needs of their district? Um, what does the, the process look like for that?
I think it's, uh, connecting with me. Um, you can even connect with Jordan at the same time, kind of a joint email on what the topic is. One of the things we've been, we're brainstorming this, is we want to make sure if we're going to put out a survey, that we're really thinking that we're capturing at the right level. Um, if it's not too narrow and also not too broad. So, um, you may say like, hey, I, I think I want to increase, um, I want to have a crosswalk at this intersection. Do you want a crosswalk at the intersection? Are we talking about increasing pedestrian safety in the neighborhood? So just want, we may would go back a couple of times to understand what we're really trying to target within that ask. Um, but yeah, we'd, we'd love for you all to be active participants. And if there's issues, um, um, that are happening specifically from your, your districts, um, I, we were talking about, we may try to have two to three active surveys at a time. So we have a recurring kind of cadence of, of people asking questions. I can also see it cyclical ahead of CIPs or budgets when we're trying to think about some capital investment and resources. Um, we, we have an opportunity to really kind of target some of that stuff. So, um, we'd love to, um, gather some of your feedback, um, and, and see how we can incorporate that into the.
Good.
Strategies.
I appreciate it. Counsel, any other questions for?
Great job. Looks fantastic. I'm, I'm looking forward to how this is going to serve us as we unfold it.
Absolutely. And, and you, you made a plug about the text alerts, which is a, a wonderful thing there. But also, um, we do have the citizen reporter tool as well, which is another, uh, way for citizens to, or anyone rather, to just, if they have an issue with anything from streetlights to, to sidewalks, anything. So that's another tool that we use that not people know, uh, know about. So I wanted to do a shameless plug there for that because I, I show people all the time. So thank you all for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You as well. It's a pleasure to be here again.
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you, Nadine, for all your comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, George.
I hadn't mentioned her.
All right. So we, wonderful presentation on Zen City. Next, we will pivot to Waterworks. And we, yep, we'll bring you all on up.
It's just me.
All right. So this is, we have our director of Waterworks, Corey Cameron, on ordinance to appropriate funds for the Parkwell Field Raw Water Line Replacement Project.
Yes. So, um, we had this project in our CIP previously, um, and we put it out to bid earlier this year. Um, and we came in, uh, we had $1.2 million and the project came in at $2.2 million. So we were a little overbid. So a little underbid funded. So we have $800,000. We want to move over from the Water Impact Fund into this project so we don't have to put in next year's CIP and we can go ahead and bid it back out. We, at the end of last year, we went ahead and bought the pipe for the project. We've already purchased all the 20-inch water main. That's in, over at the city, um, yard. Uh, we've got a lot of the 12-inch main already. Uh, we've taken the project back. We've had the engineer, you know, reworked the bid documents where we have it with some addendum items so that in case we don't have enough funding to do it all, we can break off some parts because there's a part where we have to bore under the river to one of the wells down by the zoo. Um, but we feel like we have enough to get this project done now. Part of this main was put in in 1925. Part of it further down through the park was put in like 1957, um, all the way, and that goes all the way down behind the civic center. Our last two wells at the very end were put in the eighties. And we don't have to replace that piece. We're going to tie into that. But we're going to go from the park water plant all the way through the park and replace that whole line. So this is just to move the funds over and get this project back out to bid. And we feel like we have enough money and get it done now. I think we'll save a little cost because we purchased the pipe ourselves. Where the first time around, the pipe was in the project for the contractor to purchase it. So we think we saved some dollar amount there as well.
Perfect. Counsel, any questions for, uh, Ms. Cameron?
None.
Nope. All right. We have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next, we'll bring up Economic Development Manager Derek Jarman. Looks like a couple of folks, um, from the ABCD team on ordinance to enter a contract with the Maryland State Arts Council for accepting a grant of $10,000. And when you all get settled, if you all wouldn't mind just stating your name and titles for the record.
Uh, yes, Derek Jarman, Derek Von Jarman, Jr., Economic Development Manager. Uh, before I continue, I do have to thank Councilwoman DeShiel for your, your kind words. That was very touching and, and moving. So I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Uh, this evening, I would like to present an ordinance to accept funding from the Maryland State Arts Council, Public Art Across Maryland, AKA the PAM Grant Program. The PAM Grant provides funding for artists and organizations to support the planning, creation, and installation of new local public art projects. This funding in the amount of $10,000
This funding in the amount of $10,000 will be utilized to support the planning process for a new art installation at the city park. And thank you in advance for your time and consideration on this request.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Counsel, any questions?
None. Thank you.
Now, anything you're putting in the parks, a plus?
Yes.
Yes. Any way to beautify that? Any, any other details on, so when, again, when we accept the funds? The, the process for selecting an artist, et cetera?
Yeah, similar to what was outlined in the Salisbury Prize. We're, we're not gonna make it a competition though. I think it's important to know that $10,000 is for the planning process. A lot of that'll be used for stipends to get, you know, pretty thorough proposals from artists. There'll be a community engagement side, maybe using Zen City to get some feedback on what the community wants there. But then the result of the 10,000 is a, is a pretty good lock on a $30,000 execution grant that comes next. So it is a good process with the state that we're thankful to, to get in queue for this round.
Definitely.
Great work.
Any other questions?
No.
All right. We have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move to, yes, Field Ops for an ordinance to adopt and set penalties for parking violations. Looks to be a few, a few folks from the Field Ops team. Hello there. You all wouldn't mind stating your name and title for the record?
Sure. Good evening. Mike Dryden, Director of Field Operations.
Jordan Mann, Supervisor of Parking.
So we've got a couple ordinances for you this evening. The first one is just a fee schedule we're changing. And then the second one is some ordinances. The first is in conjunction with Amendment to Chapter 10 Vehicle and Traffic Code. The parking authority would like to adopt parking penalty and fine schedule. The schedule is comprehensive as it lists the penalties and will erase, or be easier to reference, I'm sorry. And then Jordan, if you wanna add a little to that.
It's just reflecting the current enforcement that we're doing. Most of the code changes just needed to be updated from previous practices, mostly involving pay station meters. If you look around the town, you can see that we removed all those meters and now we're going to cashless system.
Thank you. Sorry, I was just spooning through the legislation all the time. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No.
Oh, now I just wanna make sure that we, again, parking and, and this is a, I wanna make sure we take this slowly and answer any questions that we have gotten or will get. So give me every bit of information and what this actually does and how this changes forward. Even, I know this is cleanup, so some things that we discussed in the last month or two or three, what this all looks like.
Yeah. So their list, if we could, if we flip flop the order. One is cleaning up the language to be able to make sure that we are allowed to have the authority to do what we'd like to do, especially while we have evolved into using, as you mentioned, a cashless system and pay stations have, have gone by the wayside. With that, giving ourselves the authority, if you look at the legislation, we now are starting to reference a fine schedule. So similar to the way that we have done fee schedules where we have all of our fees set up, it was easier for us to start and have a fine schedule for all of our parking fines. You will see an evolution of this in the coming months where we have a comprehensive fine schedule for all of our fines in our code. We have, because we had parking legislation right now, we went ahead and just added the parking fines to this fine schedule. So part one is to improve the language so that we have the authority. And, and part two is to develop the fine schedule. Part of that fine schedule though, is, is the amounts of fines. If we need to drill down on any of those fines amounts, some of those were already determined and we are just putting them into a singular repository spot. Some of those, I believe, might have been updated or created new and we can go over any of those specifically, the amounts. One of the benefits of having two different ordinances is so that we can, again, clean up the language. And second, if we need to have further discussion on any of the fine amounts, we can do that independently, but jointly in this conversation. So if we had the freedom, it'd be nice to kind of talk about both ordinances together as, as one conversation. Hopefully that was, that was enough.
Yes. I think that's, yeah, I think that's, I know that we had some questions with this, but yes, essentially can given the authority to do what, just to make sure that we clean this up. And so I'll pivot back to you all if you have any additional items or tidbits to call out.
No, I mean, just the second ordinance is just to clean the language up, like Andy said, going through that and just making sure that it's contiguous with what we're trying to do out in the field.
I, I have two discussion points, if I may, because I helped draft it. One, I believe we should probably defer to Chief Rampant because he raised the issue with respect to an amount charged for parking next to fire hydrant. This was already added to the agenda. So if you have consensus to move it forward, I think there should be discussion on whether we wanna change that particular fire amount to be consistent with the other parking in a fire lane. Right? And then one other thing that I wanted to raise, which Jordan addressed with me, is in line, starting 227.
Of which piece of ordinance?
Sorry. I'm focusing now on the ordinance to amend the actual code language, not the, the, the fine schedule.
227?
Yes. Line 227. Jordan, can you explain the intent here? Because I may need to clean up this language after hearing from you. Is it that you cannot park on a single street for a total of two hours? Or, so if you move the car up further on the street, that's still a prohibition or on the other side? Can you explain what you want to intend there? Because we may need to address that.
Yep. So it's two hours max parking on the street that they're on. So whether that be West Main, South Division, Poplar, Baptist, right? If they wish to move their car from that street to another street. So if they wish to move from Baptist to Poplar Street, they could and that would restart their two hours. However, they can't bounce from space to space on the original street. They can't play musical cars.
So I think in light of that, that we maybe need to make that more clear? Because if I were reading that, I would think if I moved my vehicle up a couple of spaces or on the other side of the street, if you can park in that direction, that I would be safe.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's just between the business hours, nine to four. Now, is there a designated area downtown for people who are on jury duty?
Yes.
Where is that?
Lot 10.
Lot 10.
Mm-hmm.
We've worked out our relationship with them specifically for them to use that. And then there's a flat rate that we get reimbursed. They were paying us per person that was coming into the garage. So we have a flat kind of rate based off of historical data on, on what that fee looked like each year. So it just ended up being a little bit simpler. It also helped us avoid when we've had all this major construction in the parking garage.
So what is the, the proposed addition or change to the legislation to make sure that we, or do you need some time to, to craft that?
Yes, cause if, if you don't mind, I think you need to maybe add the word total. And then I think I should, I'm even gonna explain in there that you can, for a more legal term for you can't play musical cars.
Sure. I just wanna make sure. I just wanna make sure.
That's not an official term?
We sure.
That's not legally binding?
I just wanna make sure that we gather some consensus on what we are.
But just to understand, so that, that is what everybody wants?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel, was that okay that Ms. Boucher worked with the DID team to craft on, on how we tailor the language to make sure that it's cohesive with moving car from street to street and not on the same street? Consensus?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
I have a question about the fees. I just, so I heard about the filing fee. Is that the same, is 75 the same that is in our fee schedule for?
So this has been in the code for some time.
Time, okay.
And actual, the code provides that the fee shall be $10. So wherever we had a reference in our code for a fine amount, we've now struck that and it's going to say by mayor and council. So that way this can be visited every year to determine whether the fines need to be adjusted. So now the code will reflect as set by mayor and council. This companion ordinance that will be passed simultaneously will set forth the amount. And it is, you see, it's proposed here to increase to 75.
The wording "fire plug," parking by a fire plug? Is that a fire hydrant or just like something, like just an actual thing you stick to a building? I just, I'm asking for a neighbor.
Asking for a friend.
Not that I would do that. I'm just, so it's a fire hydrant, not a, okay. Cause I was like, what is a plug?
Would we like to make that?
I won, I'm wondering. I'm just wondering if we should use.
Chief Rampant, is a fire plug more general than just a fire hydrant? Could it be more than that?
How about we say parking by fire plug or fire hydrant?
Or slash hydrant, yeah.
Okay.
No fine too, no fine too high for that, right?
That's true.
So does counsel want to make that, well, fine amount consistent with parking in a fire lane? Want to raise that from 35 to 75?
I mean, I think that's as, as serious. I mean, I believe, I mean, anything that impedes public safety is.
I agree. Yeah.
And this is, and, and I think the other, I saw one here.
The amount of the handicap area also increased.
Yeah. As it should. I mean, those are the top three no-nos.
Absolutely. It's still not maxed out, but that's okay.
Right.
We'll get there. We'll get there.
Early. We change it.
It's time.
Any other, I'm just spooning through here. One time. I see we had a parking garage there. Counsel, any other questions, comments, concerns? I think we, uh, thank you, Ms. Boucher, for, for noting that. And I think we, thank you, Chief, for the, the clarity on the fire apparatus or structure there that we were talking about. I would like, do we ever, sorry, I was just thinking here. Did we ever publicize about the fire lane fee that we were gonna, whenever we decided, it was a little while ago, that we were going to start enforcing those with, with some rigor? Did we, did we publicize that? I know I asked for it, but I can't remember if we sent a, a release or anything like that.
Yeah, we, we did. We have. And we could, we could continue to do it. I think we could write 250 tickets a month if we wanted to, particularly in the food line, shopping centers in area and ACB there. It's a, it's a problem. So.
If we could, I just, you know, even in just in my travels, I just tell people, hey, if you wanna, cause, cause they're, you know, we're, we're.
So just a reminder, kind of on our, our public, kind of as PSA, letting people know. This is what it is. Okay.
I'm gonna let Jordan know.
I was saying here, I don't see a press release that, I just searched in my emails. So if we, yeah, if we could send, just send a release, yeah, I don't see one that we've sent out on, that we were gonna start that and that we were going to, like, you know, make the fines. So if we could, just cause people aren't aware and we, I know we talked about that before, but I think, you know, just, we had some concerns last time when, for the library at least. So if we could send out a release, just, just saying, you know, what, what the intent is. And especially also for the, the handicaps space as well, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just to drill down on that, this work session item, would you like to let people know this is coming along? Should we wait till the second reading? I can jump out ahead of this. It's up to you.
Let, let's wait till the second reading, I think, because then, then that's the official moving of forward. I mean.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't. It'll cause too much confusion, I think.
I was gonna say.
Yeah. We could jump out ahead of it.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Listen, if someone gets stuck on it and raises the fee to 300 bucks or something, I mean, just, you know, between now and then. I'm not saying that would happen, but crazier things have been done. I mean.
Depending on what it is.
Yeah, so. You just never know.
Any other comments, concerns? No? We have consensus with everything we discussed? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. With, with both items.
Yes.
Make sure it's clear that, yes. All right. Next, we have Resolution Adopting Capital Improvement Plan for the five-year period beginning FY 2026. Mr. Kitzro and some members from our finance team.
Yes, Sandy and Shawanda. You guys can just sit up front if you want to. All the tough questions asked Shawanda. So.
We just met. I can't. Tough questions? No.
No, I met her before the fart part.
Oh, okay. So you can, okay, all right.
So I appreciate you guys. Shawanda actually had, was part of our team right when I joined and then we have taken her back. So thank you for returning. I'm gonna run through the, the sheet that I sent to everybody. If there's any specific questions, we can drill down on that. As I mentioned, included in the summary, the public document was the summary, but you all should have the comprehensive list of, of specific items. I am going to go over a couple of the cover sheet items and then drill down on some items in the summary page. And then it'll be open for discussion that you'd like to, to go dive into any specific items. And then finance will be here to answer any of the more financial-based questions. Bonding or lease or just how we structure our, our debt services, et cetera. I will do one caveat. With this being a capital improvement plan, this is a roadmap. It doesn't necessarily mean that things are funded. You will be receiving the mayor's budget within 24 hours or less. And that will show what is actually.
Tomorrow. It's the same, same applies to the rates and then, yeah.
True. So this is, again, a, a guiding document that, that will help us kind of understand what we are dealing with as a city and where we want to go as a city. So as, I won't read word for word about the CIP, but what is important, as I mentioned, this is a snapshot of the next five years. It is important to use this as a planning tool, both to understand what is our upcoming infrastructure needs, maintenance, repairs, improvements, but then also evaluate some of our wishlist items, things that we want to grow. For example, like a Unity Square, North Prong Park, a rail trail. Where do we want to be? And then also what are the things that we need to fix, repair, bridges, dams, et cetera. Because of the size and scope of the CIP, we usually have anything that's a capital, which is over $25,000. So that would be anything from fleet vehicles all the way up to your large-scale multimillion-dollar fleet building projects. Paleo filter building for 20-plus million dollars, things like that. At any point, you guys can stop me as I'm going through here. About the CIP, you can see when we do build our CIP, we try to prioritize our needs. And there's a whole bunch of criteria in how we determine what those priorities are. It is important. The CIP is presented annually to city council. It is a financial resource planning tool. I mean, I just doubled down on, it does not represent the final budget. Again, what we send in the mayor's budget will be what we feel like we are comfortable in affording in this upcoming budget cycle and also how we would plan on funding it. But the ultimate decision lies with council.
But it is safe to say, since this is the day before budget is, is presented to council, that this is a accurate snapshot of what you all plan to present to us?
It is fairly accurate based off of what we think are things that we believe need to be funded. But we did not, if I jump ahead down a little bit, the general fund budget of $12 million is not what you're going to see in, in the budget.
Okay.
So, yeah, let's jump into some of the numbers. Couple of things I, I think it's important to look at is, we have a lot of needs. And, and typically within a CIP, I think it's very important, again, to strike a balance of maintaining what you have, particularly your infrastructure. You don't wanna have failing infrastructure. And then when you can be, set lofty visionary goals for things that you want to be and where you want to, to go. And, and if you have the ability to fund those, do it. But also understand it all comes at a cost. And you have to weigh out that cost benefit analysis on the things you need to do versus the things you want to do and where do those play and how do they interact with each other? Capital projects over the next five years, it carries a $77 million price tag. So a lot of wants, a lot of wishes are there. So we have to be strategic on what we think we have the ability to fund. Also, cause Chief Rampant is here, I do wanna highlight the $15.8 million in the Fire Department. I say that a little bit of tongue in cheek, but it is a very important conversation as we continue to talk about our fire service agreement, our relationship with the county. We have real infrastructure and depreciation schedules associated with our capital equipment. And this also includes potentially a, a fourth station on the north side, if, if we were able to get to that in the later years. But it, it is costly. Public safety is costly. There's, between that and police, it's $21 million of capital. between that and police, it's twenty-one million dollars of capital, and that is just to keep our equipment up to date, and to keep our vehicles and our facilities operational.
We can't fund it with the fire lane.
I don't know, you want to go three hundred dollars?
Yeah, that's not gonna, a lot of those.
Right, so it is, it is expensive, but it's also necessary, so as we continue to work with our counterparts at the county to make sure that we are adequately funded for the services we are providing, this is one of the driving forces, as you see where we are going, and what our needs are. As I scroll down to the water and sewer, it gets worse, not better, ninety-three million dollars, and this is what we were talking about earlier, that is coupled on two major projects, that's the PFAS impacts that we weren't necessarily tracking five years ago that are now becoming regulatory mandates, and that is where you see in FY twenty-seven, when you see that seventeen million dollars, a major part of that is fourteen million dollars for PFAS mitigation management over at the paleo filter, the paleo plant, and then the following year would be a thirty million dollar rebuild redesign of the park plant. So, we've never seen these type of numbers since I've been here in a five-year CIP for the water and sewer fund, we are desperately hoping that we receive some federal grant funding, state funding to pull off some of these things, or get some sort of relief in the time compression. There are rules and regulations, I talk about FY twenty-nine as a date when you need to come into compliance with PFAS, we'll see, we'll see if that, those dates remain true. We will go over more of this in our budget presentations next week as we talk about water and sewer rates, and specifically these major projects that are on the horizon. Scrolling all the way down to our bottom, we had twenty-five million dollars in requests, but a hundred and seventy-one million dollars across the board if you count all of our funding accounts, so a lot of asks, a lot of requests, but also, it's very important to understand that a lot of these are real needs, and some of the things that we can't just keep kicking the can on, so, tough conversations. I will kind of end on this before I open it up, so as, when we talk about things that we want as a city, operationally, or equipment, or salary increases, or position counts, we also have to make sure we take care of our capital and our infrastructure as resources, this is just as important input into our budget decision-making process as staffing needs and things, and these carry big price tags. We do have opportunities to fund them differently, to help spread out some of the costs, rather than just being cash every year, whether we're bonding it or leasing it, and if you want to talk about that, we can, we've had our finance team here. I'm gonna pause there before I go to any other pages, and then answer any questions or drill down on any particular projects that you'd like to go over.
Mr. Kitsrow, is your plan just to continue to go forward? Cause I know that, so next, you know, it goes by the category, so I'm looking at the general government, and then we'll go to HTDD and those projects, is it your plan, or you just, are you gonna stop there?
I was gonna stop there, we can drill down, the summary document's there, I wasn't gonna get into particular projects, I was gonna allow you guys to go, I mean, it's forty-one page document, I'm not gonna go line by line, but it is available to anybody who'd like to see us, and again, as was mentioned, this whole document, when it's finalized, and our final budget book will be comprehensively included in the budget book.
Thank you. Council, what questions or comments do we have on the CIP as presented by Mr. Kitsrow?
So many needs, not just wants.
Yeah, one of the things, since I did bring this up, I'll zoom in so that people can see, when we talk about funding sources... Is, we look at opportunities on if we can find grant funding, or contributions from community members, or fundraising efforts to help try to offset some of these costs, so for an example, like the Nail and Mill Road Bridge replacement, our contribution is, we have a match of that, so we have a twenty percent match, so that would be from a grant that would pay the two-point-eight million dollars, and then we would have the match associated with that amount of money, so luckily, we're able to leverage state and federal dollars, or potentially even private dollars, to be able to cover some of our wish list items, and some of these things, if we're able, if we don't receive the funding or the contribution, they get pushed or tabled, so that's usually when you'll see things that may be more wish list, is if we can get funded in a different capacity, or whether it's a full funded or mostly funded, you'll see those live in those buckets, and if they don't, we can push them to a following year, but...
What are the lease agreements usually for these vehicles? Guaranteed, I mean, it seems like on, with a couple of them, the guarantee is through the next five years for the lease, at the end of that term, then, is it renegotiated, or what kind of plays there with the lease?
Sure, we call it a five-year lease, meaning, we use it differently, it's, we're going to repay that in five years, so we call it a lease, essentially, it's, so our bonds are usually fifteen-year bonds, if it's a really big project, that is a longer shelf life, we may would go to a twenty or twenty-five year bond, that's usually a major infrastructure project, a building, a parking garage, something like that, usually it's about a fifteen-year bond, anything that has a useful life of less than fifteen years, that's more that five to ten years, will be on a lease schedule, so a lot more of our vehicles and our equipment will land on a lease schedule more than bonded debt, large-scale projects that have, you know, decades worth of use will probably be bonded, we don't have a lot of cash that we put into any of our CIP, more that's for our maintenance of our roads, curbs and gutters, and stuff like that, smaller project.
Yeah, not sure why we use the term lease, but probably short-term debt would probably be appropriate, it's confusing.
And if I can just jump in and mention, I just want to remind everybody that the city's policy is that we can only borrow ten percent of air budgeted expenditures, so, for example, last year, our debt service was four-point-two million dollars at the end of FY twenty-four, and right now, air expenses are about fifty-eight-point-five million, so ten percent of air expenses would be about five-point-nine million in debt, and we already have four-point-two million, so we don't have like a lot of capacity to borrow a lot of money because we're already like close to our ten percent of air debt service. And that's just for the general fund?
Yeah.
The best way to do this without exhausting time and knowing that we have budget next week, but, so can we just go to the general fund and just kind of talk about what took priority, and I know that we have the street reconstruction at nine-hundred thousand, and the concrete program, is this what you were alluding to earlier, the mayor's plan for street lights and those kind of repairs, or where does that live within the...
Sure.
Or is that in his...
It lives, actually, let me, let me just pull it up, it's underneath...
You're referring to its neighborhood reinvestment?
Yep, yeah, I was just looking for it.
The concept there is, you know, over the past four or five years, the annual contribution towards infrastructure has been kind of whittled back, which kind of got it behind the eight ball, so we've tried to crank it back up a couple hundred thousand per year, but we're gonna try to do a one-time million-dollar bond to sort of get us back out of the weeds here, and make that investment.
That's, yeah, it's right, neighborhood infrastructure improvements, so that's where this, so, the CIP is a document that exists prior to our budget, we've actually increased this amount of money, instead of going over multiple years, you'll see it as consolidated next week with a bigger bite earlier on, so that's where the spring chase would live.
Is that, so again, we...
Well, I, I'm sorry.
Can you just, so, cause that was, that was my question, you have it split over five years, or, yes, five years, what is that, we're gonna take the, we're gonna take the bite into next fiscal year for the million, or are we still splitting it over?
You will see in our, in the budget...
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what is the, what is the plan for this, so do you have, and I know we were talking about this, about the plan moving forward for streets and, you know, those kind of things, I think, seeing that, and that's kind of my question with a lot of these, is, are the plans in place for how the money is going to be spent once we, you know, bond out for it, or once we allocate for it?
Well, I think, it depends on the particulars, but what we're trying to do, because some of these streets are, you know, in rough shape, but some of them aren't as bad as others, so we've got to look at it on a priority basis, and ones that, you know, where most of us use versus where some of us, very few of us use, so it's kind of got a couple different criteria in the matrix, but that said, what I'm hoping we do, we have, and Ashley can speak to this, we have a section in the code, we can do special tax districts, so we can go to a, you know, to a particular subdivision and try and work out a deal where, okay, we'll move you to the top of the list or middle, but you're gonna have to pay, you know, on a special tax district basis, some period of time with that debt service, and so that's, that's the theory, that we can, and we can hopefully, you know, for maybe a period of time, pick a, pick a number, so it's all part of a negotiation, and that's kind of where we're trying to, to try and extrapolate and help, you know, expand our ability to bring a greater number of neighborhoods and streets, curb and gutter up to snuff, because you go, like, for example, Snow Road, which is a street where we have, you know, a ton of use, we got broken concrete everywhere, and the street needs to be repaved, it's a snow route, but, yeah, we've got private subdivisions that are, you know, that are not private, but, I mean, they're public, but they're, but they're not used by the general public as much, so we gotta put them in a, kind of a list of criteria and a matrix that, you know, of appropriateness of how to service it.
Okay, first, let me address spring chase being in the CIP is not acceptable. Remember, the reason they were here and voiced so much of the concern is because they had been in the CIP plan, and they were taken out of the CIP plan, and still, like, three or four years later, they had no services on their lights or roads, so I think that that's a disservice to them, especially when Mayor Taylor, you told spring chase and the neighborhoods that you were gonna use some of this infrastructure money, transparency, and go in order of necessity regarding the formula used on how bad the roads are. So that's number one. Number two, you're now proposing that a development who is run by HOA can then levy a tax line item on their, on their tax bill to the city for infrastructure needs that they have. Well, that is fine for the developments and for the HOAs who have more money, so the HOAs and the neighborhoods who don't have as much money, or they don't yield as much fees, they go back to the bottom of some list?
No, so, let's put, we can talk about this next week during the budget season, but...
I'm just bringing up these concerns, these are the concerns I have.
The problem has existed for more like ten years, and I've been in office thirteen, fourteen months, so, and I've got, I think, a solution to solve their problem, which I think is fair and equitable, and I think, but at the end of the day, we all have to, it's all part of an open debate, but to your point, I've already pitched this idea to them, and we've had, you know, they obviously look for the city to pay for it, but unfortunately, we have other needs in the city that, in more primal streets, so, again, we can have that conversation, and part of budget season, but that's just what I had intended, so.
I just want to second the concern about having neighborhoods that may have deeper pockets, getting higher priority because they can pony up money as quickly, when we have a lot of areas in our city that are not as well-off, and may not be able to afford an additional tax just to get stuff done, so I just want to make sure that when we're still prioritizing based on that, on need, and not on who can pay extra for that, because everybody pays taxes in the city, and, and I think that we need to be cautious in implementing something like that, because it can go very badly, very quickly, where areas that are already neglected will continue to be neglected even more so, because they cannot pony up the money to pay for their own, or extra for their own...
Yeah, I get, that's a fair point, that's a fair point, well, I guess what I'm saying, the whole million is not designed for that approach, it's for other streets as well, I'm just saying, we can't do it out of the nine-hundred thousand that we've already allocated, so the million dollars, some percentage of it would do, go to the, to the spring chases, and some percentage would go to the more common streets, so, for example, Druid Hill, Druid Hill, if you've ever been on that recently, that thing's a, it's bad, and it never even hit the CIP, never hit the, the street, it's in bad shape, so there's a bunch of those throughout the footprint, so, yeah, to your point, yeah, I agree that we can't, we can't do it that way, I think that's, that's fair, but, but that's not where all million dollars would go, and we're gonna try and address it more fully than that.
I think this, these are good concerns, and again, I can't wait for next, next week where we discuss it further, but I think what we're hearing is, you know, that going into it, you know, going into next week, but also beyond next week, is, you know, definitely be ready for a plan for what, you know, how we're gonna use these funds, because, again, we've been, you know, we've all, or at least you and I, Mr. Taylor, or Mayor Taylor, we've been in office the same amount of time, we've been talking about a plan for, for a couple of different things, but I remember specifically for how we want to, you know, address streets and about the needs and needs assessment with those things, and so, yeah, I know we've been talking about those things, and now we're talking about, like, it's, you know, now, and...
It's our second budget year, so we're gonna hopefully make a double down here.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, Council President, if I'm understanding correctly, when we were discussing it, right now, it says neighborhood infrastructure improvements, there's a big number that we just discussed, you would like to have a little bit more detail on maybe what we were thinking that would actually include, rather than just kind of a general piece, so maybe have at least, try to break down that list as much as possible?
Sure.
Okay.
And then, so I spent some time kind of going through the past CIPs that council and the mayors have approved, and so, can you all just, what were some of your additions, a mayor and administration additions to the CIP, or new projects, or new things, or things that we took off, if you all can highlight those, and then just, just kind of underscore the importance of those things, so we can be ready for, for next week?
Sure, we just mentioned one, neighborhood infrastructure.
And that is the bonded?
As under bond, yes, but the allocation you'll see is increased beyond, is above two-hundred.
It is above, okay.
Yes. You will also see, we have, it's exhibit facility improvements, ASIA reaccreditation, we have a very specific projects that we're gonna be drilling down, we'll talk about that, but that's one of the items that is moving forward.
Three hundred and fifty thousand is for West Salisbury Community Center, which I think we're getting a scope of work done now to try and figure out what that's gonna look like, but I think that'll probably hit the mark, it'd be a great addition to that side of town.
I did see that on last, that was on last year's CIP, correct? Salisbury Community Center?
It's been on there, and it's also this year, we had it out further, but there's an opportunity presented here recently that we want to explore further, that may allow us to accelerate that timeline, so you'll see that, I will, if I can find, I'll drill down on it, but it's, it was a couple years more out.
Under...
Yeah, I'm just working my...
Grant, Sophie?
Is it on a grant?
Yes. At least I see that, so there's the one...
Yep, we were, I think, the original plan was, we were hoping to get, get this funded via grant in the original CIP, so, again, this document, I know it is like getting to you all...
Okay.
Yeah, so this is later than getting to you, but this is still something that we had, this is more of a fall document with winter development, and still, we're all planning, a lot has changed since the initial request came in from departments, so we wanted to present what was originally submitted, there's some refinements and tweaking from administration on the funding year that happened, but some of the things in real time have already moved off this list completely, and the real things that we are going to be, will be part of the, and part of the documents that you'll see from us, to kind of jump ahead, it will show all the CIP items that were, that are listed in twenty-six, and what was defunded, so you'll be able to get this, the snapshot, next year, both general fund and water sewer.
If you want to keep, if you want to go through your list, and then we'll, we'll jump back in of the...
That's, that is kind of my list, one of the things that we do have, I'll drill down on a couple items on lease, we have...
Before you go there, so I, I know we talked about the Andy and Bear exhibit, that has some multiple components, so we'll go into that next week, but the Riverwalk Community Park, I'm not sure if that was on last year's...
It wasn't, so a couple of these...
Yeah, that was my, so, yeah, that, and talk about that, and, you know, that's bringing back, but also this tire recycling center I'm seeing here.
What is that? Explain, I don't know.
Well, we're not, we're not funding that.
Okay.
Yeah, so again, planning documents... Yeah. Yeah. So again, planning document, when we met with, so when we met with the Eastern Shore delegation luncheon, we reviewed the Riverside, yeah. So it's still part of the planning document of something we wanted. It's just not funded. So you won't see that in this year's budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is still a, a document, and that's under the, the contribution side. We didn't get the money. So it's, it's, it's been pushed.
Okay, let's see. Okay. Because it, so, so basically the line item for a tire recycling, a tire recycling center, which we don't know the full scope of or what that's going to be or anything. But, so let me understand this. Under the grant, we didn't get the grant, but then under somewhere else, I think it's listed, what is it?
Funded.
Yeah. So what's the bonded? Can you explain the?
Sure.
What that has to do with it not being funded this year?
Yeah. So funding mechanisms, I, I'm sorry, I'm kind of struggling to find it on here. I'm going to get smaller my screen to see it and blow it up. So when we were building this out, maybe I'll step back in the CIP a little bit further. This being a document that dates back to the fall, when we were still unsure if we were going to get any sort of state funding, because the legislative bills had just recently wrapped up, there are still asks that we were having to the state delegation to hopefully get some funding for some of these projects. So that's where you would see it underneath some of the grant items or contributions. And then there's a local match. So typically, when we're asking for money, state or federally, any sort of contribution that we would want to make would need to be a match to whatever we're asking for them. Sometimes 25%, sometimes it's 50, et cetera. Because we did not have an appetite at the state level for any of these, a handful of these projects, there's Tire Recycling Center, the Riverside Park, those will not be in our actual funded document coming up because we did not receive the funding. It still lives in this planning document as a want, but there is no money being allocated to, to both of those projects in this upcoming year.
See, and that's where I get confused. Because when I get the CIP, and last year, I had tons of issues with the CIP, because we got it really, really late last year. So we're so happy that we got it now. We're looking at it. But this is where I get a little confused. And I think this is where some of the public gets confused. When we have things on here and you have allocated money, it looks like this is a spending plan.
Yeah, I would, I don't think that...
I mean, like in 2026?
I, I think what it would be is, that's a great way to look at it. If we had all the money in the world, this is what we'd spend our money on. But we don't. So then we start to prioritize off of this. So based off of the asks of, whether it's council, the community, or departments, this is how we would, this is how we'd forecast our funding over the next five years. But a lot of these items, we, we just want to make sure council's aware and the public's aware that there's a lot of asks that are out there, a lot of needs.
So what department actually asked, what is the tire recycling center? I think that's the other thing. I don't, how is that becoming a priority when we're just really hearing this as being a priority for Salisbury? We had, this was not a priority for Salisbury that I, that I knew of. I knew you mentioned it at the delegates. It was like kind of a side thing. It wasn't in actually the states. It wasn't a, a thing that was pushed with them per se. I just wanted to know what exactly is it, what the scope of it, why does it make a priority list? What makes it?
I think what I can help in, in shape the conversation, because, you know, it is, it is eight. And, but, and, you know, we're, we're getting confused because I thought this was the best and final. And it's, it's not. So now I'm, it's, and for the public and for us, and we're, it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of confusion going on now.
I guess, can I jump in a second?
Yes. But let me just finish my thought. That, you know, Mayor, because I think you had a lot of input on this. This is your first real and full, you know, input budget in administration. So if you can tailor and tell us like what, where we are with the needs, what is it that, what are you focusing on in your priorities? And then what you are planning or want to have funded? Because that would help us out. Because our, because our task will be next week, we're going to spend a lot of time on this. And then in the end, we have to agree on something. And what I don't want to know is if there's something in here or something that you have a plan on that's good for the, I want us, this is your time to tell us.
No, it's not. This is not budget time. We're just, you know...
But this is your, okay. This is your time to, for the capital improvement projects. This is your time to tell us what it is, or, or maybe not. I want to make sure I'm getting, is this, what, can you?
Typically, any discussion about what is going to be approved or discussed for the budget itself should be done at the budget work sessions.
Right. But the CIP, this is the plan. So if not, you know, why, what's the purpose in?
Sure. I, I think we might have done it a little bit backwards last year, which is probably why it's been mixed up. But typically, you'll get a guiding document that says, hey, here's the, more of a blueprint to where we want to go. It's purely a guiding document. That's why it's a resolution. It's kind of a roadmap to what we want to have. And it's more of a, this is what we think is important. Where the real investment and decision points happen is in the budget and what we can afford. I think it serves as a, a reminder that we have goals and needs and allows us to forecast out those. And so when we start thinking about things that are, are really big wants and we get ambitious, we also have to realize there's real big capital expenditures that also exist. You know, $171 million is a recurring debt of like $1.7 million if we bonded that. And I don't think we could even afford that on our debt ceiling. So there, it's just, it allows us to help us just understand, like, there's a lot of, lot of asks there. So when we are going through priorities, mayoral priorities, department priorities, even, you know, we heard about Zen City, public priorities, council priorities, it allows us to put everything together and really just see it in a snapshot departmentally. So that's what this goal is. So we didn't want to necessarily drill down too much of this is what we're doing. So sorry about that.
Yeah, that's why I'm, so, so Mayor Taylor, can you, with this document that we are now looking at now and to prepare for next week, what are your, what's your forecast? Or what are we, can we have a glimpse at what it is that we can prepare and what your forecast for the priorities that, that we're going to obligate for the city?
I mean, for me, it's a period of singles and doubles. We got to hit some singles and some doubles. And I think one of the bigger singles, doubles that we could hit is, is putting money into our infrastructure, which I think has been sorely been ignored. And, you know, from a CIP perspective, we're spending money, you know, at Water Works level, we're going to spend some money at, in all the different departments, although we've had a relatively flat budget overall. But, you know, for example, the concept of, of the tire recycling, which I, and I'm not making an advocacy right now for that, but we found a thousand, we're over the thousand tire mark of what found in the waterways. So, and, and there's a reason for that. And, and so we'll go into that if you want to discuss it in the budget. But it's not a, a present day issue.
But this is helpful to know, like, hey, this is, that's, that's all I'm asking is.
Okay.
Just, this is, you, you have the mic, you all, like, tell us, like, guide us through this so we...
Like I say, I wasn't prepared to make a pitch for the, the budget we put together that would be held at the budget season. So I would like to keep it there. And you guys can read it. And we can come back with questions. And we'll go next week. If that's okay.
I, I also just want to, I'm concerned about the garage issue. The garage is not on this CIP. We, we do have infrastructure coming that will need that garage.
Sure. So if we're talking about the previous parking garage, that...
I'd like to rack on that.
Yeah. So in a previous part, the, I'll call it the Lot 1 parking garage, that was something that was on a previous CIP that was also funded conceptually in a previous budget. We didn't go to bond ordinance to fund it, but we, you, your council gave the authority to bond up to $10.75 million toward a parking. So you won't see that on here anymore because that's already kind of done and is, can be acted upon at some point. So it doesn't, it's no longer a planning document because you've already given it the authority to bond. It's just now, are you going to move forward at any point in that decision? Which is a different conversation for me on a different day. But you don't, what you would see in here is if we were looking at a, a third parking garage. That's what you would see on here under the parking fund or other major capital investments in our parking enterprise.
Thank you for that.
Do you have any more to add on that?
No, I think earlier I was just going to say that the CIP plan, it's not, we're not like appropriating any money for expenses for the CIP plan. So if you went back and looked at any of the CIP plans, the majority of them were done in the fall. And that's when the requests came in from the departments. So by the time we get into the budget session, there's no way we can fund all that's in the plan. So, I mean, I think even we've knocked this down. I can't remember what the initial number was for FY '26, but I'm thinking that got knocked down some from the initial request, like moving things over.
Sure.
To try to prepare more for the budget.
Since, and I guess, and you're hitting the nail on the head. We're so, like, this is due to council tomorrow, and then we're having discussions. So I, I was just saying, if you want to, but we're not shedding any light on the next, less than 24 hours. So we'll save all questions, I guess, until tomorrow. And then we'll have 100 questions for you. And then we'll ask them.
I'll be, I'll be available.
All the questions we just asked now. But I was just going to get a, I wanted a glimpse on, on, on what it is that was, it's going to be prioritized moving forward. Because this is what, this is all we've, we've kind of had to, to, to go on, on what it is that we're moving forward with. Council, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Just, just again, this year, I think the CIP period, like last year, I think it has caused, you know, disruption in the flow of how we do the budget. And I think we need to get back to the process or a process, or just have a clearer understanding of how things flow. That's just my, my impression with the, the CIP. I think it's interesting that, you know, we get the budget on the 15th. We need to look at maybe getting the budget earlier because having a CIP plan and without a budget, I understand it's a wish list, it's a Santa Claus list, and that's great to have. But I think the priorities without having more discussional with some of the line items that are in there, like the bike, the bike, the rails to trails thing, it's not even funded for like several years. There's, let me see here, you've got the bike and, the bike and pedestrian master plan, not funded for several years, rails to trails things, not funded for seven years. You have pond maintenance at $60,000 bucks. Was that, I think it's like, I think you're, I think the way I read it is you're allocating like $10,000 a year. And I still, we make connections at SU for research for that. And there's been no follow up with that on the administration part. And this tire recycling center, it could be a really cool thing. I mean, I don't know what I don't know. So it's really hard for me to vote on a bunch of stuff that is just kind of...
It's not a part of the budget this year. It's not a part.
It's just kind of like, it's just kind of strange when you see all this and then you don't, because, you know, it's just, it's a big, it's a bigger package. It's just, that's all I'm saying. I don't, I don't like the, this is two years in a row. It's been, we, I, I never, you know, I've been here several years. And this, these last two years have been strange.
Anything else?
No. I understand the sentiments and I appreciate the, the candid conversation. We will be presenting a budget again within 24 hours. And you'll see some of these adjustments that hopefully make it clear. We will have budget work sessions Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. And then ideally, all of this will become clearer and more robust conversations. We'd ask that we'd have this as a resolution the following week. But if those conversations need to have further and this guiding document is not ready to be adopted, then it's up to you what, what you would do there. But I think over the next several days, you'll understand more about our, the actual action plan rather than the, what we see as the administration's vision for investment.
Thank you. There's nothing, no other questions or comments. Council, we have consent to move this forward?
No. I, I don't, I don't consent to that.
I, I just, I think there's a lot of questions. I can't. I'm fine with holding it to it. Do we have to move it forward tonight, though?
We don't. Yeah. No. I mean, it eventually will be adopted. At the absolute latest, the CIP is, is part of the budget document. We, we did it last year concurrently. So it's, at some point, it's, you would adopt it. But I, I don't know if I may speak, you know, frankly, I don't know how many revisions would hap, to the document. It is a, a, an administrative guiding document based off of the priorities that we see. So this is kind of what we've submitted as, as the adopted plan and how we'd want to fund it. The decision points on what gets funded and when it gets funded, that is the decision point that comes from council later on. So...
Mr. Kitchrow and Mayor Taylor, please understand that you're explaining to us tonight that this is your vision of how you want to move forward with the city. Be clear that the council has been asking for what your vision has been for 18 months. So if this is your vision, some of this stuff, we're just hearing or seeing or understanding. So it's a no for me. And I want that to be clear, that if you're defining this as your vision, this is the first we're seeing of your vision. It's not a team effort.
And I think, and I understand the process, but...
I'm a little bit, let me, let me respond to her. You know, what I put together...
Ms. Councilwoman Blake, when you say respond to her...
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Blake, I'm sorry.
I want to make sure we're, you know, we're going into this. But I think that...
Let me, let me finish my statement. I'm presenting a budget. It's the mayor's budget. That's the process. I'm presenting it to you. If you want to have a debate about it, that's fine. But when you talk about vision, you know, I, I think, as I said before, and you know, was part of my campaign, was I think we, we did a lot of visioning, a lot of ribbon cutting, a lot of, a lot of projects that we didn't focus on the basics, in my view. We got to get back in some singles and doubles. And that's kind of my philosophy. So to, to your point, it's not sexy enough. I appreciate it. But at the end of the day, I think that's where I'm, I'm kind of coming from. So...
I think, and so if I can jump in, I think, and we're not trying to debate, or at least I'm not trying to. It's eight o'clock and I...
Legitimate questions.
So, Council Vice President, and I think what I'm trying to say is, I gave you, I know the process, but this was the opportunity for, for, you know, we have something here, which again, we appreciate this. But even going through this, you're like, well, these numbers are changing this, which is fine. But I was asking you what, and, and you stated you want to wait until, you know, budget, which is fine. But I think continually, we've been asking, continually, we've been asking...
I've not gotten a single request from either one of you. I don't know what you're talking about. I've not seen a single email. You know, I've not seen a single thing other than these grandstanding attempts to try and make me look like I'm not doing, I don't know where you guys are coming from. I have no idea.
I'm not trying to grandstand. I'm just asking.
You absolutely are. You absolutely...
I don't think there's...
You're coming awful.
I'm coming off, go ahead, Mr. Speaker.
No, that's okay. I'll finish later.
You said it in private. Go ahead.
No. Yeah. And just, it's embarrassing. It really is. Totally embarrassing the way you're conducting yourself. Completely, utterly embarrassing.
President Doughty, I'd like to just redirect the council to this. We're either moving forward or we're not.
Council Vice President, I'm...
I presented you a, a CIP budget.
And I said no.
You guys can, oh, fine. We'll, we can adopt it later. What I'm saying to you is, go home and read it. We're going to have a budget session next week. We're not going to settle anything tonight either way. You know that. But this whole nitpick like, wow, what is going, what is, what is the deal? What are you doing?
Asking questions, which I think that's...
If they were useful ones, I'd, I'd say, let's go. But let's...
With that, we're going to move forward. Because I, yeah.
Thank you.
So again, no consensus to move forward with that CIP. We'll move forward with a resolution amending. Uh, thank you all. We appreciate your time, the finance team.
Thank you very much.
So glad to have you back here. I wish you...
Yeah.
Excuse. I wish you the best. Absolutely. I will for a resolution amending the Salisbury City Council Regulations Rules of Order. Ms. English, if you could...
I actually just have a question to clarify this last resolution. What would you like for me to do with it?
Well...
Would you like us to come back for a work session?
Yes.
Yes, we'll come back for a session for that.
Next question.
Let's go.
Ms. English, if you could highlight the changes made to the City Council Regulations Rules of Order.
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So what we did here is there was a need for some updates to the Rules of Order that we have recently voted on and passed. One of those changes is under number seven, the legislative sessions. So instead of having specifically on there what order the meetings would be in, we changed the wording to state all meetings will convene at 6:00 PM in either a work session or legislative session as determined by a majority of the council. So in putting in the wording that way, if for any reason the order of the meetings were to change again, we wouldn't have to redo the Rules of Order. It would be reflected already in that wording. There's one more change that we did under number eight. one more change that we did under number eight, um, uh, work session. So in order to be consistent in the rules of order, um, what we had listed under, uh, the legislative session, um, B, we wanted to also list under the work session in eight B. Um, that wording is the clerk shall endeavor to publish the agenda no later than 12:00 PM on the Wednesday before the regularly scheduled work session. Um, that way it was in both locations and not just the one meeting.
Thank you so much for, for cleaning that up.
Sure.
Uh, council, any questions or discussions on that?
No.
No?
Nope.
All right. Given that, do we have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Great. Thank you. And thank you, uh, Ms. Boucher, and thank you, Ms. English, for working on that. We'll pivot to the public comments portion of the agenda. Again, you have three minutes to, uh, to present and on any of the above items. And you have three minutes to speak, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and if you are a city resident.
As in three minutes on each topic or three minutes in total? So I'll talk quickly. Lynn Bratton, still living at Salisbury on South Boulevard. Been there for a lot of times. Number one, Zen City. I spoke with the guys out in the hallway. Um, they didn't have an answer for the question that I had was how much is it costing the city? I think you're getting good data. But out of the 48 people that responded on one of those questions, I was two of them. Just FYI, because I can do the survey on my phone. I can also do the survey on my computer at home. And that means I probably could do it on my tablet. And if I had two tablets, I could probably do it on each of them. So not that I want to skew any of the results, but I think one of our council members asked, could they be bombastically changed by different people doing it? And that's an area that I think we need to look at. And I would like to know how much money we're putting into this to get that kind of data. Uh, and I think we need to look at data statistically. I've taken stats classes and you need to look at the population and how many people makes enough to make a decision on. I mean, that, to, to say 48 people wanted a open gym or whatever that was, that's good. But is that really the consensus of the community that's going to be spending $2 million on that West Side Community Center? Cause that's in the CIP that I just saw. Okay. That's number one. That takes the two topics there. Um, next one, the art installation process that you did something with the arts council. I think this kind of might tie in. Uh, we just did a beautiful thing in, in, on Light Street this weekend. I think that you need to identify like a process there of how are we going to approve these projects? Does it go to the mayor and then he sends it to the council, that commit, the committee, public arts committee? And then does it come back to you guys to approve it? You know, I think it should come back to you guys somehow. The committee says it's great. They said, they submit it back to the mayor. Then it should come back to you guys. And if it's in a historic district, hello, maybe it ought to go to the historic commission before we go painting things on sidewalks. I'm just, that's just a community concern I have. I don't know that I would have wanted that if it had been painted. It's pretty. But would I have wanted that in front of my home in a historic neighborhood? I don't know. Uh, you know, I don't know. I haven't been down it. Who's going to take care of it? What's the process of maintaining it? It's a great project for SU to write up, their, their students can write things up and they can publish it. Okay. Um, city council regulations and rules. 12 o'clock is great. It was like at noon on Friday this time around. That does not give anybody time to look at the documents that are in it and to get it published. So I'd like to say that 12 o'clock would be great on a Wednesday, even if it's five o'clock on Wednesday, that gives us time to, to kind of regroup on all that. Um, oh, and as far as the CIP, folks, I understand budgets. This is a plan and a vision. It's not like the budget. So there were budgets from other, there were CIPs from other years that had things in them that got moved and moved around. So I think we got kind of bent up in some of the process on that. And yeah, it would be nice to get it before Christmas, but we didn't. So that's where we are. And I got four seconds left. Did y'all get all that?
I think so.
We did.
Thanks, Ms. Bratton. And actually, yeah, council did, um, we did bring forth legislation to kind of button up that process that you're speaking about, Ms. Bratton, about, um, what the, what the process is for art. Um, and we urged the department to, to have some, because there is nothing standing right now, but, but administration and, and the department said that, that wasn't a priority. But we, yep. I understand. I understand. That was a suggestion from council, but yes, I don't want to take from anyone's public comment, um, time there.
Thank you, listening.
Yes.
All right. Um, my name's, uh, Mike Perenski. I'm city of Salisbury resident, Monument Square. Um, just a quick thing on parking. I'm going to put my, uh, business owner hat on here. There's a two-hour restriction on commercial vehicles parking on the downtown quarter. Um, a question I would like the, uh, council to consider and the city to consider is, uh, those performing trades work at all the businesses downtown, um, if you're an electrician, plumber, HVAC, uh, draft service, uh, company, you may need to park outside of a business, um, for two hours so you can have access to your van. You don't have to run to the garage. Maybe it's a permit we ask for. Um, maybe it's something else. I'm, I'm not the expert here, but, um, I would encourage you guys to look at that because it's going to cost businesses a lot of money if they're paying an electrician to walk around downtown looking for their van. Um, and then just in terms of the CIP, I had to go all the way back to the FY twenty-two CIP to find the $400,000 that was, uh, included in there for city park lighting. Um, that's, city park improvements has been kind of characterized in a number of ways, whether it's city park master plan improvements or other things, Riverwalk improvements, et cetera. Um, a lot of these things do involve parks, but they're not specific to like one park in particular. Sometimes they are. We only have, um, uh, so I'd like to see us find a way to incorporate this, uh, $400,000 for lighting back into a CIP and find a way to get that funded. It's one of the number one concerns that you see from residents, whether it's in the, uh, citizen reports or just in terms of any kind of feedback you get from people about the city park or our parks in general, lighting and public safety is number one concern. Um, lighting is just a no brainer um, for the city park. Um, I did want to highlight a couple of other things. If we had this CIP, uh, discussion tonight, um, in FY twenty-three, we had a tennis complex that was included in the CIP. It disappeared. It was never discussed among folks that, um, meet monthly, uh, at the Parks Committee. Um, it just kind of came and then it went. So, I mean, that's just kind of the way things go in the CIP. If we kind of look back and forth through them. I, after, every time Ms. Jackson attends a Parks Committee meeting, I'm asking her, you know, how are we including things in the CIP? I, I think just, I'm asking the wrong people. Maybe they're not in the room, um, in terms of defining a vision for, um, what goes in there. Um, and I will say there is not a Parks Master Plan in the CIP this year. It's been in previous years, not been funded. Um, but I think it's really important for us to actually take seriously creating that document so we can create a plan for our park system as it continues to grow. So thank you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other public comments? We appreciate you all for coming out. And if there are no other comments, this, uh, work session is now adjourned.